To retire.
So am I.
And I agree, and I've already talked to you.
But you're elected.
There is. And I already talked to you about having a couple individuals come in here and sit with you.
Not for thirteen, uh, thirteen hundred and fifty dollars, what is that gonna get somebody to come in?
But if they're interested in the position, that's all I'm saying. It might behoove them to come in, take a look at it. And, and this one, you gotta get somebody that's qualified. But.
I.
I would look at, I would look at this position like I've looked at everything. That. In the case that we're looking for somebody new to hire. Due to that person retiring. Then at that point in time, that salary should be looked at as to what the salary should be. And where it is with the rest of the towns, like we've been trying to do all along. So we stay. We stay in with that, that same line of thinking.
No, and Donna is, is no different, she's, it's the same difference with her retirement. As far as training.
Well, it isn't, it's not a, i- if I've trained somebody, it's given them a good nudge to get in. But when I get done December thirty first, two thousand twenty-three, you have somebody that's gotta collect taxes right away.
I'm saying it's equally as important.
Yeah, it's very, I mean, we're saying that one job's, I take, I feel degraded, like Mike said.
Well, I don't think that way.
No, because we had discussed that, that you are allowed to have.
And I've never had one, I've never, never had to use that line item.
I understand that, Donna, but I'm saying that that would be a good place to utilize that line item. And to have her or him, whoever is willing to try to learn that job and willing to go through the election of it, to come in here and be an assistant town clerk under your provision that you're allowed, even though you don't use it. We could utilize that to have them come in and do those services, right? And learn the job.
What I'm, my hearing is like, you will put an assistant, you wanna pay him. And you want Donna to come in and train him?
She's already salary for her position as town clerk.
Yes, I understand.
But she's, she's in a lot, she isn't allowed. It's a, a deputy clerk, is, is that the right?
You're allowed to.
Yeah, you're allowed to deputy clerk, so in that case, you could have somebody come in. You can't guarantee they're gonna win an election. But at least they could learn the job and see whether it's something that they would like to do. And she's allowed up to two of them.
Okay, of course.
Yeah, we are.
Not interested, but for the assistant, you have to go by civil service rules too, and I don't know if you can have two by civil service rules, you may have to split the position and do another, you know what I'm saying?
Which, which? Which one are we talking about?
The codes officer.
Okay.
The codes officer, I believe you're only allowed one for our town by civil service rules. So you'd have to give him, him or her a different title or position other than a code officer.
You'd have to stand in a position and, or use in these two positions.
But I mean, could we break it up and have two different, like Howard mentioned? One person, safety.
Right, and again.
The other one, code enforcement.
Right, and again, you gotta go back through the civil service and split the positions and start over. There's a process.
Two doing.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it can be done, it's just you gotta follow the process through civil service.
And regardless. I'm not sure of this, but being a part-time physician, are you? So you're saying it falls under civil service?
Like, Clinton County Civil Service.
Even though it's part-time?
Clinton County Civil Service, yeah.
Yeah.
The counties each have their own rules on civil service.
Yeah.
You've read the letter from the Association of Towns, huh?
Right, under one county.
That's why they specify with county.
Each county does have their own.
That does.
We ran into that.
Yeah.
On another position, as soon as that person hits four years in that position, and you gotta either make a decision prior to that time, we're gonna keep that person on or we're gonna get rid of them, because once they hit that four years, you have a lot more paperwork.
But you know, past practice, we have reduced salaries before. Other boards have routinely relayed, and what he's proposing, if the majority of the town board would like to do that.
I don't ever remember any sitting position reducing. We'd reduce when the positions become available.
You'd reduce, you'd reduce the dog control officer immensely.
But then we brought it back up.
Well, that was because two years later, he came to the board.
Because the practice wasn't, he fell handle correctly. And he must've been right, because he ended up removing the job back.
I don't know if he was right or not, but everything felt that way. But all I'm saying is, we're trying to stand under a two percent cap. The one thing that I hear constantly out in the road on the street is that we pay way too much money for that position. That would be, that is what my duty is not to, and you know how I feel about it, and not to bring it up and try to get a reduction in that, because I agree with that. I think it's, I think it's, I think we shouldn't be getting people like you that works sixty hours a week, Donna. Everyone else that works a ton of hours here. I just think it's out of lack, and I think it should be adjusted. Let's cut it.
He's got him slippable.
That'll be the only one we, yeah, we have caught from the three percent.
Well, I'm not saying three percent, we're, we've already given the three percent. I'm talking about salary. We agreed to leave three percent across the board, so we don't get into that situation.
Right. So what are you thinking, you'd like to, what one of these two items would you like to, first of all, reduce, and by how much?
Well, it's, you know, when you call you the towns, it's combined, just like ours is, you know, the same guy gets the same pay.
Well, in terms of budget, though, it's not.
Right, right. But we're talking about totally, don't give two. It's hard to get the numbers from a lot of these, I was on the internet, I called one, called Beaverton, it was about twenty thousand.
Yeah, a lot of them are on the internet.
Right, yeah, I researched a little too late, so I don't have all those numbers, but.
Town of Peru's might be in the paper that I printed out.
The Town of Peru's.
But I think it should be less than you, Kevin, I don't think it should be more. Someone that works eighteen hours should get paid more.
Howard, Town of Peru is civil service full-time, you're different.
I, I was kind of thinking, being on code enforcement liaison, that it should, I think a fair pay for those jobs will be eleven thousand apiece, twenty-two thousand total. That's just my opinion, that's all, one person.
So we got one, the Beaveton one was, you said around?
It's around nineteen, if I remember correctly.
Nineteen thousand?
Yeah, and I don't have others. Try to get somebody, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to call and get directly. I don't have them. I'm just saying it should be less than you, for one thing, in my opinion. I don't know anyone in the private sector would be that way.
I didn't hope to go hire somebody like Donna for that position.
I think you would.
And then we'd have to figure out, like I said, how much you're gonna reduce these one by. I think, uh, eleven thousand in the position, you're gonna have a fun time trying to find somebody. I think this is a marshmallow budget.
Yeah, Gary.
Okay.
Huh? Where do you think? I really said it, he's the twenty-two. It should be, I don't think it should be more than Kevin, that's what I think. Where's Kevin at twenty-four?
Twenty-four or something.
Twenty-four seven.
That's a marshmallow part of it.
And taking into consideration, they've been there for fifteen years.
No, probably just.
I will, but at least we got it for ten, that will tell you whether we're close on it.
But I don't know all the circumstances, so I shouldn't even say that.
No, but what did you use last year's, how much of the increase, that's what I wanna know.
Yeah, but I can't, I can't go by that, because I have to divide it, because of the Scott of Falls.
Is that, is that what you were thinking, though?
That's because Scott of Falls doesn't pay that much.
Do we have to set?
No, I agree, yeah, because, you know, we only pay two hundred and something thousand.
Yeah, so I can't. I've got a lot of percentages in.
How much was it?
But don't we have, last year's, uh, six hundred and something?
Two hundred and forty-one thousand.
No, 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 that's after it's split, we're splitting the Town of Plasberg. I mean, she'd have to look up the overall budget, so that she could figure out the percentage for the Town of Scott of Falls.
It'll take, you can get someone to take that down. What did that first, you know? So, how much price?
Six oh four nine eighty-five. Kevin, six oh four nine eighty-five.
But the thing that scares me, though, is eighteen months, that they give you the, because there's six.
Howard, isn't a lot of the certification, I've heard this now, is online. Some, some.
I, I, a pre is online. But you have to go, from what I understand, I'm trying to find out for sure, but you have to go to the actual courses. You just say, when there's six of them.
It would be nice to know what the other ones are.
Do we have something tomorrow to know?
We would have to schedule another meeting, if we don't set it tonight.
Do we have enough time to schedule a meeting for tomorrow?
No, not for tomorrow, we'd have to do it next week before we did.
Isn't there, I didn't bring my laptop. I thought there was a way that if majority of the council requested a meeting, that you could call one and not have to abide by it.
There is.
It's an emergency, it's an emergency meeting.
No, it's, it's, yeah, it's an emergency meeting, no, you could call it for the next day.
Well, you better off just to, we have to have five days.
Yeah.
You better off just to do it next week, to publicize and do it next week.
What you're talking about, Howard, would be a meeting where it would be a regular meeting.
When we needed to appropriate some quick money, or we had Irene Sandy, and we needed to add some money to the highway budget to cover the cost of the washout. I don't think this would arise to that.
It's the seventeenth, or it, I was gonna say, the next, your next work session is the seventeenth, but Donna and I are gone to our court conference. So you're better off just to schedule a meeting for next week or the following week. And have it publicized.
So we are in agreement, are we in agreement that we should cut the pay?
If, if it's out of alignment, and we're not gonna run into any E O C or D H R issues.
Or civil service.
Or civil service issues. Because of his length of time of service and.
Well, so we're scheduled for a week, and we're researching.
I, I get nervous on those things, because if he lodges a complaint with E O C or D H R, saying that, you know, I'm getting discriminated against because I've been here for fifteen years or eighteen years and my salary's higher. That's the only thing I, I take into consideration, because you're, you're looking at a fourteen thousand dollar decrease in salary, is what just went around the state. That's all.
So thirty-six is a lot.
It may be, depending on what the other towns are giving. But I think that's a, that's pushing off, off, off the envelope there. As a town supervisor, I'm just saying.
Well, we gotta do something, we can't just sit here with a decision.
Well, another complication. You said our town attorney has a conflict. So I really think we should consider special counsel.
We have time for that?
You'd have to hire somebody, you have to have a meeting for that.
Yeah, I understand.
We don't have time, we're gonna hire other attorney that we have. Or he's just called Association of Towns, I think.
Yep.
Well, I can check into civil service tomorrow, and I'll see if I hit some of the other towns and do some pricing. They'll give it to us.
Howard, I can give you, I can have, I can give you the contact who we have brought around at civil service.
Okay, thank you. And when do we want to have that meeting?
So. I think the minimum we should think about is the three days, so that we can put it on the website and get it out and get advertised. But we're looking at, uh.
Monday.
Monday's Columbus Day.
We're looking at Tuesday. Is there any conflicts down here on Tuesday?
Yeah, Mary's on vacation.
I'm on vacation next week, but I'll come in. Just remember that.
It's tomorrow, Wednesday?
Yep.
Okay, I'm just trying to think of the press republic, and are we gonna have a, a problem if, it, I mean, as long as I send it, that's all that matters. If I, if we have proof that it's sent and it's not published, we went through that, Reggie, with you at the public here, I know this for a budget hearing one time, it didn't hit the paper, but.
You made the attempt.
We made the attempt, and I had proof that we sent it down.
Yes, but the paper does not go out Sundays, and it does not go out Mondays.
Mondays, you're right.
So we gotta make sure that we get three days, that it, it's gonna be able to go out there.
Well, then you got Wednesday and Thursday night in this court.
Well, if we do it after six o'clock, we should be fine.
Well, one of these two maybe.
After six per court, we should be fine.
I'm not saying that's the stone, the number, I mean, I just say this needs to be looked at and addressed.
Yeah, it's, I'll tell you, for one, I, I'm not in favor of cutting anybody's salary by fourteen thousand. And I'm saying, you're right, and I'm only one on the board.
Right.
I think that we're looking for some issue there, who cuts salary that much. These are the, our pleasure, and we do make the budgets. I think that's a hard number to sell.
Depends what the other towns are.
That's what I'm saying, I have to have some info on other towns.
I have one, I have one, one town, but we can get more, you know, we're making more educated.
So. So we know what we have to do down here, and you guys are asking for a meeting next Thursday?
Asking who?
You guys are asking for a meeting next Thursday, I won't be here, but.
Is Wednesday enough time down there or not?
I'm working that night.
So you go, I think, no.
Wednesday, Thursday.
Well, what?
Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay, so Tuesday, if we do it Tuesday, I can put it in the paper, I can send it down to the paper on Tuesday. I mean, tomorrow.
Wednesday.
Okay, and then we can get it on the web?
Yeah.
On the bulletin board?
Not a problem, hopefully.
Tuesday, it's six days.
Three, I'm taking off.
When are we calling it?
Budget work session.
Continuation, just like I put up for the agenda the other day, I put in the agenda for the third and fourth, it was a budget hammer. All right, we do the same thing. So.
Would it have to be ordered work session?
No.
Budget work session or meeting, do you think?
It's not a meeting, right?
It's not a meeting, it's a work session.
I mean, it's not a regular or a special or emergency meeting, right? Am I correct?
Yeah. It's continuation of the budget, tentative budget.
And today's paper?
A reclamation of it.
In the notes of interest was somebody's budget work session.
Probably was ours.
No, it had three days listed.
Tuesday, I would do it.
In fact, actually, I'll do it right now when we leave.
All right, so Tuesday, Tuesday at six o'clock?
Is that going to be live?
Yep.
So I'm gonna cut my, I'm not gonna take vacation Tuesday.
Okay.
Is there anything else we got looking at before, or did we finish up?
No, that was.
Highway was done last night.
Did we, did you guys go over? Did you guys go over all the rest of it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Do you have those, Mary, do you have those numbers for the fire districts for Morrisonville and South Platte?
Morrisonville just came in, but I have to break down the percentage, because it's more than just.
I'm just wondering what they're.
Six hundred and fifteen thousand three oh four.
But that's not what we did.
But that's not what we pay.
Okay.
Because more than the Scott of Falls.
Towns pay some, and we pay some, ours is usually around two hundred and something thousand. But, but I wouldn't get so caught up with it, because I'm, I'm under the right mind of thought, special districts like that does not affect the two percent cap.
But not to get off that, did you guys go over all the waters in the highway and everything?
Yeah, we did. So that brings us to just this, and hopefully, I don't know, as long as that one lasts. I thought that was gonna take about ten minutes, but it didn't. These are what I came up with. Everybody on the line. For capital improvements that will have to go online items in this budget. And if you look at the right-hand side, it'll tell you where they should go in the budget. So Mike's been asking for quite a bit of equipment up there. So number one is two hundred thousand transferred into his large equipment fund. That'll help you with your front end loader, your edger, and your shoulder machine that you were looking at getting. And a utility trailer.
Is this already in our budget, or is this?
It is not in the budget, okay? And that was the reason why I wanted to make sure that we had the local law to go over the two percent. Not to increase everybody's salary and decrease everybody's salary, but for this right here. So let's bring it up, I'll try to explain this to you the best I can, any questions, hammer, okay? So basically, two hundred thousand would be transferred out of Mike's, um, unallocated highway. Okay? Now, it would be for the utility trailer, front end loader, the edger, and the shoulder machine. My, my understanding is he's got quite a money, quite a bit of money in his large equipment fund anyways, correct?
The, which one?
The large equipment fund?
But that's, that's separate, because that's permissive emerat, permissive referendum.
Right, but there is money in there.
Yes.
So that's why I didn't transfer three hundred and fifty thousand.
Right, but if you spend any of that, it's a bad.
Yeah, in any of these, I would make sure that, like I said, uh, equipment purchases, like that front end loader, when we move that money and transfer it, we definitely have to do a progressive referendum, let the public know what we're doing, when we're transferring, what the reason are we tran, we are transferring for. Mr. Don is familiar with that, because at that point in time, as a permissive referendum, they could get a petition to stop whatever it is, okay? It's my idea, but that, I would like to see it in the budget, so that we have the opportunity to do that. Your equipment's old, some of it's failing, you've been complaining about it for my three years I've been here. So we have enough money in the bank right now, we're not, when we put in the two hundred thousand to your, your budget, it's gonna automatically blow the two percent right out of the water. But it's, it, it's not going to affect the highway tax, because we already have the money here. Alls we're doing is transferring from that account to spend.
Some people are gonna say, our taxes went up four percent, or it's really, whatever it is.
Right.
One point five percent tax increase, but it looks like a overall.
Like a two hundred percent, you know what I'm saying? Because that's just the way it has to go in the budget in order for us to spend the money. And that's exactly why I wanted to do the tax cap law override, was to be able to start spending some of this money that's accumulated. Because we can't hold it for no reason at all, we have to have reasons for doing it. And we've all known that that is one of them that needs to be addressed.
So in the budget, it's gonna show the two hundred thousand expense, but then the, in your appropriations, it's gonna show two hundred thousand coming out of, yeah.
Less, right, it'll say less two hundred thousand by.
But it still takes up your tax rate.
It, it still counts against the two percent tax cap.
It shows a budget increase, but it does, it doesn't necessarily show a tax increase.
It will not.
Right, because you're taking it out of the under.
Because it's already there. You're not raising the tax rate to make up for two hundred thousand, they're already there.
Yeah, that's why when you look at some of this, you start seeing the numbers, the percentage.
I'm gonna get to it, it, it's, it's getting to that point where we're gonna need to justify why we have that, those monies in those accounts.
So we got three million in there now, close to.
That's what you just looked at, basically, all right, yeah. Adding everything up, you got two million nine hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-one cents. That's at the top of page two, but let's get through page one, and then I'll, and I think it'll come to light for you. Number two, we talked about the River Street Park putting a, um, set of bathrooms in down there with a changing area, and also getting water over to the bathrooms and the gazebo. So I put in, I'm gonna, I'm guessing high here, because I think that if we could get us to do it, and I'm not afraid to, to build it, um, I think we can maybe get that down for about sixty, eighty. Now, the water, we're gonna have to incur a water hookup for the Town of Plasberg, which is whatever it is for them to go over and tap into the water at the end of that street to do that. So again, between the materials and if you wanted to bid this thing out and have it done, I would take a hundred thousand easy to do that.
Is that a permanent structure, Kevin, that you're asking for? I thought there was not allowed to be any permanent structures built down on that property.
Yeah, you're on top of. Yeah, you're on top of things, but I, I talked to Glenn Cutter and the state legislator, state legislation has just. Opened up a bill that relaxes the towns from the constraints of the FEMA buyback lands. There are two towns that went ahead and did stuff without.
Okay.
You know, and then praying for forgiveness after, and they may be in trouble for doing that. Glenn looked at the light hour down there and there are two locations that are above the flood plan stage. He said if near state D, DC decides that, or the core engineers from the fed side of things decide that they don't want. A septic in the ground or they have issues with, uh, structured with ground water, ground septic, that you could put an above. Septic system in, as a tank inside the building. And then have it pumped like we do the porta potties down there already. You still have water to the building there, you still have, you know, two bathrooms for the women's side and.
Sure.
One bath toilet and a urinal for the men's side with benches in the front so they, when they're changing. Especially in the winter to ice skates and heavier equipment or heavier outdoor garments to go skating and then before they jump in the cars, they can lighten up. It, it, it's gonna be a, this park has been a four season park since they opened. Cause we do cross country seating down there.
Sure.
You know, in the winter, they do ice skating down there in the winter. They use it for walking all summer and fall, plus we do the summer concerts down there. And one bathroom really isn't enough when you get fifty, sixty people there. That's a cost that will just never go away. Having a, a porta potty. It's not a title money, don't get me wrong, but I think the more permanent solution and what's better for the town and to give some capital improvement to the residents of the town. If we have the funds to do it, I think it would be a, a good opportunity to show that we're moving forward.
Yeah, I don't disagree, I was just asking.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Stipulations down.
Probably over answered you, but hopefully I answered you, but yeah.
It's really discouraging, part of that answer is the fact that the town's allowed to build on that, but I'm not allowed to build on my own property.
Correct.
So that's kinda discouraging.
Correct, and there's another issue down there, but that's for another day, but. But yeah, they're trying to, they're trying to say, okay, and what they did with the state legislators, they said, well, the town is town property, they're still paying county tax and they're still paying state tax on it. Originally, they would have loved to see it all go to Woods and then they never have to worry about it again. But they realized that the towns are paying money on, which means the residents are paying money on those taxes of those lands and they're lightening up if it is a town run function, okay? And we, we've got a good heads up Glenn thought because we already had the park there and many amendments, including a non-permeable surface for the gazebo and the footsaw corp. Were approved already on those sites where the light, light iris said that it was paying up that it wasn't what, so.
Number three.
Number three, yep, general appropriations, two hundred and thirty. We've discussed the garage floor up there. Mike was nice enough to also get us some tentative. Numbers on the drainage in the, the outside drainage repair in the back.
Did you get that email?
I never.
I sent you one this afternoon.
Okay, I must have missed that one.
Those bits.
Okay, so. We've been working on this for what, a year and some change now? To repair that area up there, the last one we came in at two hundred and three thousand. You were like eighteen thousand plus to take care of the drainage in the back alone.
Thirty six thousand total for the front and back.
Right, but roughly about eighteen for each, you said, right?
Right, front.
Um, so just to make sure that we have enough money for any overruns or anything like that, I would suggest we use two hundred and thirty thousand out of the general fund. And transfer that over so that we can take care of the garage floor drains, the floors and the outside drainage repair to the back. So the water's not creeping back in the building.
That'll be, that'll be just unbelievable.
I mean, pretty much, we already all agreed to the. The, the project as it is, we know that it came in at two hundred and three, I'm hoping maybe it goes down some. But my thought was if we don't use it, it goes back into the unallocated fund reserve. So it's no harm, no foul. It gives us up to that amount. We can't go over it, but at least it give us up to that amount to utilize to fix those issues up there. The, putting the ten thousand back in the sidewalks so that we can continue to work on the sidewalk issues and edging and any new sidewalks that are needed or need a, in need of repair. That's why I put in ten thousand there for the public. You know, the publicity CE general fund rather than taking it out of the sidewalks. Thirty thousand, I did a lot of homework on that today. This is Reggie's proposal for. And a couple constituents, you said, were looking for a sign. So. I spent better part of an hour and a half with this guy in the room today. Glenn Van Blackburn, he is from Focus Digital Displays LLC. We will have to, and I explained it to him, we will have to get three quotes, this is over ten thousand dollars, so for by our procurement policy, I'll have to get at least two other quotes. I, he was explaining that. I said, I want a ballpark on what. That he thought it was gonna cost us to go with a sign roughly. See, wanna look at that picture right there, uh, it's small. I apologize, but that's the closest I could get. Uh, the dimensions basically are. The top part of the sign will be two foot tall, two foot one inch tall by six, six, okay? That will have constantly town and stellar falls on, okay? Then underneath it, the digital sign will be two foot six. Six, the same length. And length will be four foot. Six by six, six. So the, the overall dimension of that sign will be four foot tall by, you know, six foot six. Plus the height of whatever the pole is that you put it on, or if we do like the masonry work. So that, that sign, which is F, was a Frank C's of Charlie sixteen dash thirty two, one, one, two, L. Basically, the, the sign itself costs ten thousand five hundred bucks. Then you need the ID cabinet, which is two thousand five hundred. These are all estimates, okay, but they're within the ballpark, you don't think they're gonna go off, go off. Matter of fact. I told him we wouldn't be starting the project till spring probably. He believes there's local contractors that can handle the work. The install is between, on the low side, four thousand five hundred dollars, on the high side, it goes sixty five hundred. So I kept everything on the high side to make sure we transferred enough money to make sure the project goes through. The pole is seven hundred dollars with the cover if we do a pole, if we set it on a wide pole or an upright. That is with a decorative plastic cover on it, so it doesn't look like a sign sitting on a pole. If you add all that up, it comes to about twenty four thousand dollars, okay? With his estimates. The masonry. When we did it at the fire station, we got six grand. So if we put this in a, to match the brick of this building and put a brick base and brick sides on it to put the sign in. It, you're, you're about thirty thousand, would be a safe number to transfer. So if you guys wanna look at that, again, it doesn't say we have to spend this money. Uh, it allows us to do it. You would transfer thirty thousand dollars to the general appropriations.
How about the communication with the sign, is that just done by a computer?
We talked about that today. Rather than, you can do hard lines, he goes, they're not as common anymore, like the fire stations. He goes, most of them are done by wifi now. So the sign is now wifi compliant, so if you pair it with a computer in here, then you can wifi it out to the sign and do what you need to do. There's power that has to be run, there is some ditching work that would have to be done with the lines. But yeah, he covered that in the, the prices that I, I gave you.
So it's just.
He goes, it'd still be around thirty thousand dollars to, to hook this thing up if you wanted to be safe.
It's not wrong, I said, same when I said it needed to be nearby, it could be anywhere, so. You said putting multiple signs up.
Right.
You know, you can do it, you could.
You'd have to be within wifi, this thing, and you would have to have a, a power supply to go to that sign to power it up. And then you'd have to have, depending on where you put it, you'd have to have another meter there, whether it be on a pole or whatever, so that we get charged electricity for running that sign, you know? If you put it at a remote location.
We're only doing this one, it's for you.
Yeah, he, this guy's, they've been doing this, what'd he tell me? Forty years. So he goes, uh, he goes, we'll send you references, uh, we'll send you names and numbers of people that you can talk to that we've been selling for. He goes, I don't know who you used over at your local fire station, but he goes, um, up until about probably ten years ago. He goes, that was the way to go was, you know, cat five wire running to it, back to the hard computer and tied it. Uh, he goes, the computer itself would have to be tied into the internet, whatever one using, but from the sign to the computer could be wifi. He had no, no qualms about us calling anybody that they did install us for and getting those references and talking to the speaker. I know we've talked about it for what, two years now, Reg, getting the sign out there?
Spent a while, sure.
So. We got, we got money in the, in the reserve funds that if you guys are on board with that, I put it in there, okay?
Is that a two sided sign?
It is a two sided sign, yes. And like I said, this guy pulled up our property and goes, whatever kind of pine tree you got out front there, it looks like that would be a good, I said, the blue color, the blue spruce, he goes, yeah. I mean, he pulled, when you do Google maps now.
That's what you said last night.
Yeah. He goes, I said, that's exactly where I was thinking to put it, he goes, yeah, and he goes, I'd move it a little bit closer to the, your driveway entrance on that, he, he's looking at the map on a cockatoo of the, of the property, you know? He goes, is that way you have proper sight distance for each direction? He, he pulled up the speed limit sign. He goes, it's only thirty mile an hour zone, so you know, you'll have people traveling not fifty five miles an hour, so they should, he goes, that's where he came up with what side the sign should be. So that you don't have to have great big huge letters and try to get somebody's attention that's traveling forty five miles an hour versus thirty. The, the, he's definitely know what he's talking about.
So you're talking about taking down the spruce?
No.
No.
No, it would, it would be, that's what he said. He goes, it looks like you have room in front of it, as long as you keep it to the driveway side. Yeah, no. No, I never talked about that. Matter of fact, I told him that, I said, that's a.
Welcome to Las Vegas.
Holiday trip.
That's awesome.
He said, he said, welcome to Las Vegas.
Yeah.
My bedroom window's right there.
Yeah. Well, that's another thing he said about this, these, the newer ones, when it, it's bright during the day and it's got a photo sensor on it, so at night you could set the dimness to it, so you can dim it right down. Cause it doesn't need to be as bright when it's not.
You don't even need a counter usually when the.
Yeah. So anyways, if, if you add all those up. It comes to, you know, five hundred seventy thousand dollars that we would be moving from the unallocated fund. Now go to your second page. Unallocated fund reserves out of all accounts, I added up to two million nine hundred sixty one thousand four hundred fifteen dollars thirty one cents. Unallocated fund reserve for the general is one million six hundred twenty four thousand, six hundred twenty four dollars and sixty seven cents. So if we take. All but the two hundred thousand out of there, okay? That would mean that we're gonna commit to taking three hundred and seventy thousand dollars out of that one million six hundred, which would leave you a million and a quarter. But that's shy too, because we're gonna have money rolled over from this year's budget that we haven't used, that's gonna go up over into the unallocated fund reserve again. And we got another quarter, if I'm not mistaken, of the tipping fees from the landfill that's gotta go in here. So we're not depleting it, but what it would show the comptroller's office is we're not holding this money and not doing that stuff with it. And the residents that live here that do have to put up with the landfill and we get. Roughly five hundred, half a million dollars a year from that thing. We, we do subsidize the budget this year, we subsidized it by two hundred ten thousand of the unallocated fund reserve. And we'd be now doing capital improvement projects with five hundred seventy thousand dollars of them. So three seven, three hundred and seventy would come out of that general. The remaining, like I said, we give you a million two hundred fifty four thousand six twenty four sixty seven, plus whatever we're gonna get for the tipping fees for the landfill again this year and whatever we haven't spent on this year's budget, the twenty twenty two budget, which is gonna have money to roll over. If you look at where that three hundred and seventy thousand adds up to, that's the hundred thousand for the restrooms and water line, the two hundred and thirty thousand for the garage floor drains and outside drainage repair. The ten thousand for the hundred seventy fifth parade anniversary of the town, the winter festival and music in the park. And the thirty thousand dollars for the informational digital sign. Unallocated fund reserve for the highway. The highway has eight hundred seventeen thousand sixty seven dollars and ninety seven cents of unallocated money. So basically what Mike doesn't use in his budget every year goes into an unallocated fund. And it is creeping up on a million dollars again. By taking the two hundred thousand out of that and moving it over to his large equipment fund. That would reduce that down to six hundred seventeen thousand sixty seven dollars and ninety six cents, which is still quite a bit of money. And it's showing again that we're utilizing it for capital improvements or equipment improvements in that case to your, your fleet up there. It by no means makes these accounts small enough where if we had an emergency and we had to buy. Three hundred thousand dollar brand new plow truck, that we still could buy two of them out of this, alright? So I don't think we're, we're hurting the taxpayers there. You asked Reggie about the ARPA funds.
Yeah.
So the third page shows you the ARPA funds.
Okay.
The ARPA funds allotted came up to five hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred twenty two dollars and sixty eight cents. To date, I misspoke last night, there were two allocations out of that account, there, there was a two thousand dollar invoice and a three thousand dollar invoice. So I missed the three thousand dollar invoice. So those are on the Rix and Ave project. The remaining ARPA, that adds up to five thousand dollars so far spent out of the ARPA money. That leaves five, half a million dollars again. Five hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred twenty two dollars and sixty eight cents left in the ARPA that we still have to spend. Now, some of that we have appropriated for the Macy Lane, the Rix and Ave projects. And again, we need to, the splash pad also. So those are all projects that are in the works at some stage.
So it's okay to spend that money on a more underwater district that doesn't affect the rest of the taxpayer?
This ARPA has nothing to do with this budget, but you asked about it, so I wanted to make sure that, and it is a budget, so that.
Yeah, sure.
Everybody's familiar with what we have in our accounts. Transparency guiding everybody, I'm not. Marvin transparent. This money is about the minimum we should be spending right now.
How much more have we allocated for the three projects right now, ballpark?
For the, the ARPA money?
Yeah, splash.
Roughly about fifty thousand for the splashback, I think it was forty eight. Roughly about 50,000 for the splash pad. I think it was 48,000 some odd dollars for the, the difference on 125 versus the grant and what the expenditures went up over the last five years of working on that project that's been around. I think that Rixon will be 70, maybe 80, don't hold me to that, but somewhere around in that, that ballpark. And I believe that, uh, Macy Lane could be over 100, maybe 120. So all in all, you're looking at maybe one year's worth of ARPA money and we still got a, another whole year to go. Because basically, we got 200. What the hell am I gonna tell you? I should have wrote that figure down. Uh, hang on, maybe I did something.
I thought, Kevin, I thought that the splash pad was a grant.
The splash pad is a grant of 125,000 dollars. But when I got the new numbers on what that, uh, splash pad was gonna be to install it and to do the whole works, we're about 48,000 dollars projected to cover the total cost. Now, what we do is in-kind service work and that's where, you know, the highway equipment comes in. Well, we can only, we can only work so fast at a time, but I, I'm trying to work with you here.
I know.
Sand, they include the sand in with that, you know what I mean? There's no reason why we can't do our own sand filter. We got plenty of sand up there to come down here and put sand in. The item three and item four that he's got up there, if, to put three or four, uh, feet of, uh, compacted, item four, if we do that, that comes off the price.
No, I just didn't know about that, what you just said.
If we do the, the stripping of the ground and haul that stuff up and get it out of here, then we can save a ton of money there. Uh, Joe Denzick said, any inside, in-kind service work that the town's willing to do on its own, comes off the cost of that. But I have to budget for the extreme that we had to hire it out at prevailing wages. So that's where that 40 is.
The reason I'm asking is we've had talk and we just went back up 25,000. That may be an area too where for sidewalk repair and upgrade, especially prevailing wages and everything, that we're not sure we are, might be able to pull some of that out to use that too. That would be-
You can, and you wanna, you can, you can always do it throughout the year, okay? But the comptroller's office likes to see what your budget is.
Yeah.
They don't want you hiding it, you know, so to speak. Not that we're doing that, but-
No, I'm just saying for-
If, if we felt that we needed to transfer another 10,000 over to help with sidewalks as an unallocated fund reserve.
Or we could take it out of ARPA.
Or we could take it out of ARPA.
If we decided to go out and hire a contractor to come in and-